And I'll give you.
Cable management is not my forte.
We'll just wait for her to give me a thumbs up or something. Because we have, we have enough people here. Hey, Brandon, is your, are, are you related to the McCallisters that have their, the wells and stuff? I've probably asked that before. Okay. I just thought it would, but yeah, I figured it'd be appropriate, right?
I thought you were gonna ask about the Home Alone McCallisters.
Oh, he's related to them.
Okay, I think Leah says we're ready to go. Okay, thank, thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to start, call to order the April 5th Lacey Planning Commission meeting. And I'm looking for approval for the agenda and consent items.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, thumbs up. Opposed, down. Okay, we will move on. Who's looking for public people? Ryan, I saw his mouth move, but of course he's muted.
We have a, we have a couple of members of the public, but they're both city staff, so I'm anticipating they don't have any comments. If they do, they can use the raise hand function.
Okay.
Not seeing any, so go ahead, Dave.
Alrighty, we will move on to commission reports, starting with Mark, anything?
No report this time.
Okay. Karen?
Nothing to report.
All right, Daphne?
I just had a couple of comments. I wanted to compliment, there was a great article in Lacey Life about the Museum and Cultural Center. So I know people like me that are driving by that, what's going on? When's this gonna be done? Blah, blah, blah. So I thought that was a really great article. And so I wanted to thank whoever was the author of that and getting that in. That was good. And then I also wanted to say I follow City Lacey on Instagram and the posts have been really, really good. There was this great spring break post where they had like 10 pictures of places to go on spring break. So really imaginative, engaging. And so I just, I don't know who those city peeps are, but they're doing a really good job. So I just wanted to call that out.
And we will definitely forward that on to public affairs. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. Good job. Eddie?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention about, I guess it was about a month ago because I wasn't at the last meeting. Rick had forwarded information about the TRPC Transportation Policy Board openings. So I did apply for a position with the Transportation Policy Board. I haven't heard anything from them yet, but I assume that's because they meet on the second Wednesday. So I'm assuming that any decisions will be after that. But I just want to let you guys know that I did apply for that. So it looked interesting.
Okay. Gail?
Nothing to report, except I second Daphne's comments about the website. It really does look good.
Awesome. Okay. And I have nothing to report. Is Director's Report is Ryan?
That'll be Grant.
Grant.
I just, just have one thing. Rick asked me to pass on is hosting some short courses on local planning in the next couple of months, and I'll send out the information to everybody. But if you haven't been to one, they're really useful. They're put on by, have been put on by Commerce and PAW for years and years. But it's really good background on, you know, permitting, planning, the planning commission's role, the council members' role. They're different every time, but it's fabulous information and well worthwhile. So I'll send you the links. The next one is the April 21st from 1 to 4, Tuesday, May 31st from 6 to 9, and then Monday, June 30th from 1 to 4. And I don't believe there's any charge to register, but if there is, you know, the city would pick that up for the planning commission. I would really encourage anybody who hasn't had, taken one for a while, or hasn't ever been to one to, to attend if at all possible. They're, again, they're just really fabulous sessions.
Are they sequential or are they standalone?
Standalone. Yeah.
As, I haven't had the opportunity to do any of those. Has any other commissioners had a chance?
I think I did a long time ago, but I have undoubtedly forgotten everything that they.
What were those again?
I'm sorry?
What were the dates again?
April 21st, that's a Thursday in the afternoon, 1 to 4, Tuesday, May 31st from 6 to 9 PM, and Monday, June 30th from 1 to 4.
Thank you.
And Grant, you'll send something out?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Alrighty.
And I guess I will add one more thing quickly since we did talk about it last time Rick reported out on the Meridian Market application. That hearing was actually scheduled for Monday, but we've continued it to next Tuesday at 10 o'clock because the power would out, was out in that area. So that would have meant that a lot of the citizens would not have been able to attend the the hearing and provide their testimony. So we've made the call to, to go ahead and continue it to next week so everybody can participate. So just an FYI.
Good. Yeah, that kind of made sense to, to move that. And I know that on that Nextdoor group had mentioned that it had changed, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we just want to make sure everybody got a chance.
Yep. Alrighty. Okay, we are going to move on to old business. Brandon McAllister is here, utility engineer with an update to the Water Comprehensive Plan.
I'll, I'll introduce Brandon and then turn it over to him to give his presentation. So the Water System Plan is a plan that we keep updated every 10 years. We complete an update to the Water System Plan and Brandon will go into the kind of ins and outs of that. We did do an introduction to the Planning Commission, I believe back in June. Was it Brandon? Do you remember?
June or July, I think.
As we were starting to complete the draft, which I did send to you by email late, very late, about a half an hour before this meeting. So I know that you haven't gotten a chance to review it yet. Please take a look at it. Brandon's gonna provide some, some background on the, on the document. And, and really, the, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for, for Brandon to give an introduction because we, we did have some new Planning Commission members. Unfortunately, I don't see our newest member here tonight. But really, the purpose of this is to kind of kick off the public review part of the Water System Plan update, which will eventually come back to you for a, a future public hearing associated with our 2022 slate of comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendments. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brandon to go through his presentation.
You know, Ryan, I, just before we start, I think he is, is it Hans is here? He's just not Hans?
Yeah, he's our, our staff member, but not our newest Planning Commission member, who is Alan Baum, I believe.
Yeah, so is Hans just attending? Nope. And Peggy arrived.
So I see Hans, he's waving there, yeah.
Oh, there. Okay, great.
Yep. So yeah, we're just missing Plan Commission Member Baum.
Okay. Welcome, Peggy.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and see if I can share my screen here. Alright, so I think we're finally ready to move this plan on to the public review and kind of approval stages. So I just wanted to give you a kind of a refresher on it. This might be might be all old stuff to some of you. It might be all new to some, but we'll give you a quick rundown of kind of what the plan is and what's in it, and then a little, little schedule of what the next steps are. And if you have any questions as I go, go ahead and just interrupt me. I'm happy to answer. Okay. So the Water System Plan, this is a state mandated planning document. So this is a, it's a Department of Health requirement for all Group A Water Systems, which is us. These are now done on a 10-year cycle. Years ago, they used to be done on like a six-year cycle, but since our last plan was adopted, they've moved to a 10-year cycle just because the amount of work that goes into these, it wasn't really feasible to do it that frequently. So this is really an, an engineering and a planning document. As you go through it and read it and look at different things, you'll see that it's, it's very heavy on the engineering side and calculations and all kinds of real dry stuff, but, but it serves two purposes. It's both engineering of the water system and also planning for future growth and the longevity of the water system. And the bulk of the plan is really just an update to our previous plan, but it is an update with all new you know, growth projections, forecasts, all the new facilities, a whole new capital improvement program. So there's a lot of new in it, but it also leans pretty heavily on the previous plan. So in general, what it covers is the general description of the system, the ownership, what area we serve, what what the community is like, what its needs are. It covers policies, anything from you know, how we, how we treat fire protection type stuff to billing things, how we handle new connections, things of that nature. It's long-range planning for water supply. It's looking at source protection and water quality treatment aspects. It's system capacity or maintenance programs. It's our capital improvement plan, and it's also the financial piece of it. So you know, the day-to-day operations and also paying for all the capital improvements. And a lot of these parts of the plan are really laid out pretty well. And some of the Department of Health documents, there's the Water System Planning Guidebook, which we follow very closely and you know, obviously Department of Health experts to follow that. And then it leans heavily on their Water System Design Manual for the engineering calculations and more technical aspects. So our service area is shown in green there. And it, it sort of follows the UGA, but not entirely. You'll see areas kind of in the southeast that are served by what is now the PUD. There are some areas in the meadows. There's the Tanglewild system. Those are all PUD systems. So so there are some other utilities within our UGA. And there are a few areas outside of our UGA where we do serve water, like down in the Squali Valley. So so even though it's a city of Lacey Water System, it's parts of the UGA, some parts out. So it the boundaries are a little messy and some of that is because of how the system has grown over the years. You know, we started with the small Huntermore system and then over the years, we just acquired different, small water systems as they sprung up. And you know, we, over the years, we've just sort of merged them all together into one big system. So in the policy section, what you'll find is things like conditions of service, when new connections are allowed, how they're allowed to connect. There's design criteria, reference standards. We generally follow WashDOT standards, AWWA, which is American Water Works Association. And of course, our own City Lacey Development Guidelines. So those are some of the, the design references we use. There's other policies for sizing of pumps and pop, pumps and pipes and storage. That kind of sets level service as far as you know, how much standby storage we have in case of an emergency, what our minimum water pressures are, things of that nature. There's fire protection standards, which we, of course, were consistent with what Community Development and the Lacey Fire District use. So till we fall right in line with that. There's policies that basically just say that our intent is so we've got policies that recognize all the other planning efforts, both the city and county and TRPC, and that we our intent is to be consistent with those. And then there's other financial policies that cover billing practices. If somebody has a water leak on their service line, you know, how we cover reimbursement, things of that nature. So so you'll find all kinds of stuff like that in the policy section. And then we go into demand forecasting. The way we kind of do that is we we start with the TRPC projections and apply that to our current customer base. So we go through and figure out how many customers we have in each different customer class. And then we apply the growth rates from TRPC. Those are all broken out by TAS. So we, we kind of follow the same methodology and apply them in certain parts of our service area and then grow the, the ERU count for each class in each part of the water system. And we use ERUs, that is an equivalent residential unit. That way we can kind of use a common quantity of water for each connection. So so we use these multipliers that you'll see over here, you know, one, one ERU is one single-family house, but a water meter that serves a multifamily type of building averages about 5.6 ERUs. So we have multipliers for each different type of customer class. And we use that to kind of develop our growth and our, our water demand projections. And you'll, you'll find an entire chapter just on how we walk through all those estimates. So another part of the future projections for water use is looking at the historical water production and then trying to grow that according to those growth projections. Some of the interesting things you'll find is our average day production for water is somewhere in the 7 million gallons a day range. And then in the summer, it jumps up into the 13, 14, or even creeping into like 15 million gallons a day in the summer. So there's quite a range there between winter months and summer months, which is, that puts a big stress on the system. But it's also something that we have to account for and plan for to be able to provide enough pumping capacity for those summer months. This, this chart here kind of also demonstrates that on a monthly basis. You can see in the winter months, water production is pretty low. And then in the summer, it really jumps way up. So currently we're using a ERU value of 181 gallons per day for ERU. So that's what the, that's what a regular single-family household uses on average. There are certainly some that are higher, some that are lower, but but we use that as our kind of base unit of water to put together these projections. Then here you can see the projections kind of forecast out into the future. On the bottom is the average day demand, which is if you just took the entire year and averaged out what it is per day. You can see we're currently around the 7 million gallons a day range. We're forecasting that we'll be somewhere in the 10 million gallons a day range, but then we get to roughly 2040. Same with the peak day, which is more your summer usage kind of scenario. We're starting at about 15. You know, that's probably late in July. We see, see those numbers. And we, we expect to see that grow to somewhere in the 20 million gallons a day range. So it is certainly becoming a lot of water. So another big piece of the Water System Plan is the Water Use Efficiency Chapter. And you can think of that as sort of more of a water conservation chapter. So it's really, the intent is to not be wasting water and to use it as efficiently as we can. So some of the things we look for there is the distribution system leakage. So every water system has a certain amount of leakage or unaccounted for water. That can either be pipes that just have leaks in them. It can be water theft. It could be poorly calibrated meters. That's, that's really just water that you don't know where it went. So so one of the big things is to try and keep that percentage of water down. And then another big part of that chapter is to set water conservation goals. So in this particular plan, our goal is to reduce water consumption by one gallon per day per ERU for, for single-family residences, which doesn't sound like a lot, but in our last plan, we started with a an ERU value of about 190 gallons per day per ERU. And since our last plan, we've managed to get that down to 181 gallons per day per ERU. So so that's actually a pretty good gain. It shows that people are conserving more and using less water in their homes. So our intent is to continue that goal and try and get it down to somewhere in the 170 gallons per day range for our next plan. And then a lot of the, a lot of the commercial and the irrigation type customers, we lean more on some of the education and outreach measures. We provide technical assistance to HOAs and commercial customers to try and improve their irrigation systems and make sure that they're not overwatering. So once we've come up with the future demands and know about how much water we're gonna need in the future, that's when we start kind of putting together the capital improvement program, figuring out which projects we're gonna need to do and when. So this chart sort of shows the progression of so like this red line is maximum day demand, and then the blue line is average day demand. So you can see how those demands are increasing over time. So what we do is we go through and evaluate our actual production capabilities and look to see which projects we need to bring online to stay above the red line and deliver projects kind of in a just-in-time fashion. We, we want to be far enough ahead to where we're not in a crunch, but but certainly you don't have to have every project done all at once. So some of the, some of the big projects we've got going on now, we've got a replacement well for Source One as one of our old wells that is certainly showing its age. So we're trying to be proactive and getting a new well ready to go to take its place. We're adding a second well out at Well Four, which is the Cap City area. That will help increase our instantaneous production ability. It'll, we can pump a lot more water out of a second well. We've got pipeline improvements that help us get more water out of our existing wells, particularly the ones out at Madrona Park. And then we've got some improvements out at Evergreen Heights. There, we've got a big well out there. And then also Well Seven, we're planning for a replacement well there. So Well Seven is actually our largest producer, particularly on annual volume, that we pump more water out of that particular well over the course of the year than any of the others. So that that's a very key well that we want to make sure we keep in good working order. So the new supply wells that we plan to bring on in the next couple of years, these will primarily serve future growth. We've got two wells out at Marvin Road. These will be these will be near the Hawks Prairie Treatment Facility. They'll, they'll be on the northwest corner of the Lamont, or not the Lamont, Marvin and 41st. They'll be out in that area. They'll bump directly to the existing treatment plant. And then there'll be a third well over in the Meridian Campus area. So those will be coming on then over the next 10 years to kind of help meet the demands of growth. And then the next big piece in the plan is the water quality part of it. So that goes through and analyzes all our wells for, you know, the various water quality parameters. Generally, we've got pretty good water quality. Some of the deep wells have high iron and manganese, which we've got two filtration plants that we run to help remove that. We've got three new pH adjustment facilities that are in design right now. Those will be used to help prevent corrosion and customers plumbing. And then we've also got updates to all of our monitoring plans. There's monitoring plans for disinfectant byproducts. There's call form monitoring plans. There's inorganic and organic contaminant plans. So there's a whole suite of different monitoring plans that we've updated. Those are all Department of Health requirements. So so there's a lot of stuff going on on the water quality side as well. So kind of on, on the heels of the water quality aspect, you've got the wellhead protection part of the plan. So here in this table, we go through and kind of document what each of our source wells, what is construction and its depth is. We evaluate, evaluate it for how susceptible it might be to contamination. And then we update our wellhead protection areas. So this map here shows a different time of travel capture zones. And you can see there's, there's an awful lot of the city that has some kind of wellhead protection zone covering it. So even though you might just have one little well in one spot, it's actually capturing water from a much larger area. So so we're certainly trying watch what kind of land uses go on there and make sure that we're monitoring to watch for a potential source of contamination in those areas. Okay, and then the system analysis part, this is where we kind of do the engineering part of it to make sure that the system is sized appropriately, all the pipes are the right size, and we've got adequate looping and and all the water gets to where it needs to be. This here is just sort of a hydraulic profile that shows the relationship of all the wells and the tanks and how they're interconnected. How the different pressure zones, kind of the different elevations that they operate at. And then just sort of a three-dimensional map of what the water system looks like with the pressure zones. So each pressure zone is set to effectively a different elevation, which translates into your water pressure. So with that, we, we do the distribution system modeling. We have a software program that we calibrate through field testing. We go out and actually flow hydrants and then we watch a SCADA system. We put out pressure recording devices and make sure that our model actually duplicates what happens in the field. And then we use that model to look for the various pipeline deficiencies and ensure that everybody's got the appropriate amount of fire flow and everybody has the appropriate amount of pressure. Then kind of the last piece of the system analysis is the storage analysis. So when we do that, we take all of our storage tanks and sort of slice them into these different categories here. You've got operational storage, which is the very top, that kind of dictates when wells turn on and off. Below that, you've got equalizing bands, which is, helps cover for peak hour demand. When you have, you have a real sudden high demand, that equalizing volume is what kind of makes up for what the wells can't keep up with. Then below that, you have a fire flow and standby zone, which is very rarely used, but it's, it's there for if you have an extended power outage or, or if you do have a big fire, you've got reserve water above and beyond what your normal day-to-day needs are. And of course, the last part is dead storage, which is basically just water that's unusable in the tank because it's at too low of an elevation. So with that, with that analysis, what we've found is we're looking to build two new storage tanks. We're looking to build two new storage tanks, one of them is actually almost finished up in Hawks Prairie, so that'll add. A second tank on the Hawks Prairie site. And then the other tank we're going to be building is the Terry Cargill reservoir, which will be down on Inteco Loop. And that'll be a. Uh, it's an elevated tank with, it's a composite tank with a concrete column and then the steel tank on top, so. So those two storage tanks will add approximately three million gallons of additional storage volume for us. Another thing we found through the storage analysis was. We can reduce our standby storage if we install auxiliary power at some of our well sources, so right now. There's only two sites where our production wells have, have generators that will run when the power's out. So one of the projects we're going to be doing is adding more generators at some of the other sites, which means that they'll be more reliable, they'll be able to run. In the event of a power outage and that helps reduce the amount of standby storage we'll need. So after all that, we put together the capital improvement program. So some of the, some of the highlights are three new wells over the Marvin Road and Meridian Campus Wells. Several replacement wells. We've got the new pH adjustment facilities for corrosion control, that'll be at the Madrona well site. The College Street Well Field and Beach Crest. Uh, we've got new iron and manganese filtration. We've got two new storage tanks. Uh, we've got, we, we've got one repair project, which is for the, the existing Hawks Prairie storage tank. It's got some issues with the roof that needs to be repaired. And then another big project is the meter system. Our, our AMR, the automatic meter reading system is. Getting kind of old and it's been starting to give us trouble, so it's going to be a big job to go out and actually start replacing. Several thousand meters to try and get that up to date and work better for utility billing. So a lot of these projects, they're all really important because. At, at the end, what we do is we look for what our limiting capacity is. So we look at, you know, source production, we look at our treatment ability, we look at our storage abilities, we look at our transmission abilities. And what we do at the very end is we put an actual number to. How many ERUs can we serve with the projects that we've proposed? So right here, you can kind of see. With what we've got proposed in our CIP, we expect to be able to serve fifty-seven thousand ERUs. And through the planning efforts, we expect to see approximately fifty-five thousand new ER, or not ERUs, but total. So, so a lot of these projects are critical to making sure that we can. Meet these future growth requirements. So after all the system analysis and capital improvement plan is put together, then we go through and. And analyze our operation and maintenance programs. So just sort of some highlights of what the day to day operations guys have to. Maintain and operate, there's over four hundred miles of waterline, there's. Eleven thousand valves, four thousand hydrants, twenty wells, which the wells take up a lot of maintenance. Seven existing storage tanks, six booster pump stations. Nine different pressure zones. And that is all maintained by twenty-four FTEs. They also manage our SCADA system, which. That provides the communication between the wells and the storage tanks and the city maintenance center here. It gives us alarms when something goes wrong, it tells the wells when they should run and when they should stop, so it's. So having that SCADA system is critical to making sure that the system continues to function smoothly and that people can respond when needed. So the other programs we do, we do a unit directional flushing, we have valve programs to go out and exercise valves, make sure that they're going to work when we need them to. We maintain the fire hydrants, we do leak detection to make sure that we don't have. Too many leaks out in the system. We do meter calibration at our source wells, we do. Monthly water sampling, we do, we do cross connection control and utility locates. And all these programs are kind of detailed more in the chapters if you, if you want to read through those. So that's kind of what's in the plan. There's a lot of appendices that you can look through if you're so inclined. But kind of the next, the next steps are, we're going to start the public review effectively now. And that will run into May, we'll probably go. Oh, we'll probably go till mid-May to give people a chance to look things over and comment. I believe we've got a public hearing sort of penciled in at least tentatively for June. And at that public hearing, that's when we'll, that'll check two big boxes for the Department of Health, that'll kind of be the official. Presentation to the consumers. That needs to happen at a public meeting, which, which some of these briefings probably count towards that, but that, that hearing is kind of. The public's official chance to provide comment. So that is a Department of Health's requirement. The other requirement is the water use efficiency goals need to be officially set in a public forum, so. So that's two things we're looking for during that public hearing. Then once that's done, then we'll forward this on to council, we'll do some briefings with them and. Get them up to speed on what the plan is and. And where everything stands, and once council is. Is good with the plan and they're, they don't have any other changes they want to see made. Then we will forward it to Department of Health, which their review will likely take all of ninety days, it could be more, it could be less, but. But I would expect it to be a pretty lengthy review. Once they, once Department of Health has reviewed it and they have no more comments. Then we will take the plan back to council for their official adoption. So that's kind of what the, what the schedule looks like and what you can expect to see in the, in the planning documents as you look through them. So, any questions?
I'm, I'm sure there's a bunch.
Yeah, I, I kind of.
Yeah, Brandon, thank you, um, I, I have a question about. Since I read it this weekend in depth in the Seattle Times, what happens in a major seismic event?
Well, it, it's hard to say, there could be parts of the system that get damaged and there could be parts that don't.
I asked because you talked about building one of those water. Towers, um, over by Inteco Loop, I guess. So does that give you pause at all or not?
Well, they, they are designed to meet the most current seismic codes. Which. You're probably more likely to see issues with some of our older tanks. May not, at the time they were built, some of the codes weren't as stringent, so. The anchorage for some of the older tanks is probably more suspect than the new modern tanks. In fact, we, we have gone through and retrofit some tanks not that long ago, like the Union Mills tank. Several years ago, we went through and actually added a. I think we added another eight feet to the foundation and new anchorage all the way around, so. So we have looked at some of our existing tanks and we will be retrofitting ones that show deficiencies.
Thank you.
Brandon, uh, one thing that came to my mind is, uh, and you just used the acronym ERU. Uh, do you want to explain what an ERU is and how that's calculated?
So an ERU represents a, a, an average. Single family residence, so what we do is we, we go through the billing data for all the. Single family customers and average them out to, to just have an average daily water use for a. Single family home. So, and we do that because it's an easy unit to, to then translate into commercial customers and. Other types of uses. And, and the single family is by far the, the largest of our customer base.
Right, so that, that's a equivalent residential unit, that's, that's what the. ERU stands for, and I think you said fifty-five thousand, planning for fifty-seven thousand?
Yeah, but, but don't translate that directly into single family homes because.
Exactly.
That includes commercial uses, irrigation uses and everything, there. All those kinds of uses are, are sort of translated into that ERU unit.
Exactly, so you know, something like a, you know, a. Coffee shop or something like that, maybe uses a lot more water than, than a house that would have a lot more ERUs associated with it. Not to pick on coffee shops, sorry Dave. But, um, you know, somebody that has, you know, frequent dishwashing and those kinds of things in a commercial establishment is going to use. A lot more of, of the ERUs than, you know, uh. Something else that, you know, maybe it's like an office building or something like that, just has standard kind of flushing toilets and sinks and those kinds of things, so. Keep that in mind when we talk about ERUs, that that doesn't mean fifty-five thousand dwellings, it means fifty-five thousand equivalent dwellings.
Right.
Thanks, Brad.
Yeah, Mark.
I couldn't hear you, Dave.
And Mark.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, good presentation, I, I noticed I was never aware how much. Water usage went up in the summer compared to the rest of the year. Um, has the policy of assigning different days for when people water their lawns, has that made a difference in evening things out or? Or reducing the amount of water needed?
I don't believe it, oh, I don't believe it reduces the overall amount that people use, but it does certainly even it out. So before we did the odd even watering, you would see some days would be exceptionally high. Water usage and other days would be lower. So by evening it out, it makes it a lot easier for us to manage that demand.
Yeah, it seems like a good policy.
Daphne?
Uh, Brandon, I was just curious, you know, as far as we expect public comments. Uh, one of the things that comes to mind is the backflow testing that, that we as homeowners do annually. Can you speak to that? What do you guys find with that? Is, I'm assuming that's under your purview. Um, what do you find, um? It's, cost keeps going up for us homeowners, it just seems like every, uh, year, it's like ten or twenty dollars more, um. And so I'm just kind of curious if you had any insight into that.
Well, I'm not deeply involved with the backflow program, but I do know that, that it is a Department of Health requirement, so. Things like irrigation systems and certainly certain commercial uses. Do require the use of either a double check valve or a reduced pressure backflow assembly. And they are required by Department of Health to be inventoried and tested annually. So we don't really have a whole lot of flexibility in, in dictating whether or not somebody uses one. It's, uh, our main responsibility is just to enforce the, the WAC at that point.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah. But, um, when it comes to water pressure. What's the average pressure we should be having at, at an individual home? And also are there times where the pressure can be extra low or extra high?
So. At your home will depend on, it'll depend a lot on where you actually live and what elevation you're at. And it also depends on which pressure zone you're in. So in general throughout the city, we try not to have anybody at lower than forty PSI. Although the, the actual regulations are for thirty PSI, that's sort of the, the state minimum for. Peak hour demand pressure, so, but our goal is to get you at least forty. And we try not to go too much above eighty PSI, although there's a few areas that do. That there isn't really a cap on how high it can be, but once you get to eighty PSI, you have to have a pressure reducing valve on your service, so. So it's a necessity sometimes, but we do try and avoid that. In general, most of the city is probably in the fifty to seventy PSI range. And really, it, it shouldn't vary a whole lot, you know, seasonally or throughout the day. You might see like a ten DSI swing from high to low. But really, if you were to see exceptionally low pressure or exceptionally high pressure, that's usually going to be related to some. Kind of disturbance in the system, either a waterline break or fire somewhere. Somebody's using a large amount of water that has dropped the pressure.
Okay, Peg.
I, I apologize, I, uh, entered a little bit late, but you might have covered this. Um, I'm curious about the aquifer and the source and the water availability. Uh, we're having strange weather and we could face, um, a severe drought. And just curious about, um, the source and the reserve and. What, what kind of, um, things can we expect if there were, uh, climate change shifts?
So. We've got twenty wells right now. And those wells, they all draw. Out of three main aquifers, so there, there's several wells that are in a very deep aquifer, there's kind of like three layers. Of aquifer below us. So there's a couple wells that draw out of a really deep aquifer that has fair amount of water down there. There's a really prolific kind of middle aquifer, which is kind of the best water quality. And then there's a shallow aquifer, which like well one and well four draw out of. So well one and well four in particular, because they draw out of the shallow aquifer. We do see both seasonal and we also see long term drought responses in the water levels there. So, so even just. A couple of years ago, we had kind of a dry spell where you can see water levels in well four kind of drop. Because it's more than water table aquifer. So. So we do have at least two wells right now that are, you know, they are susceptible to extended drought periods. The deeper wells that are in the middle and deepest aquifers, they tend to show much less response to seasonal and. Long term drought conditions. But it, it is something we watch for.
So there, there is, um. There are impacts then during dry, very dry seasons on the pre, pressure, no, but.
Not on the pressure, but we do see in the well, the water level available for, for drawdown as you're pumping. That can be reduced at times if it's particularly dry.
Thank you.
Hey, Brandon, I had a question in regards to, uh, how closely we work with LOT. Uh, with their reclaimed water. Um, is there a strategic plan on, uh? Trying. I, I, I didn't know how the terminology would, to re, to get some of that reclaimed water back for like. Watering irrigation and golf courses and things like that, is there any strategic thought on that?
There is, but it's actually being done under a separate effort, so I would expect. Probably in the not too distant future, uh, Terry O'Neil will be bringing you a reclaimed water comprehensive plan. Which will sort of address some of those issues.
Okay, and.
So we have been working with LOT, trying to figure out what to do with the reclaimed water, but that, that's kind of being done as a separate plan as opposed to. Part of this water system plan.
Okay, and off of Hawks. Uh, off of Marvin Road between Hawks Prairie Road and Willamette. There's that large, I don't know, it's like a holding pond, uh. That sits right off of the main, main Marvin Road.
Uh, there are infiltration ponds.
Is that?
I think.
Yes, is that?
Alhogan Bay.
Okay, that's different.
Oh.
This, this is, well, I think it's different, I don't know, maybe it's connected from the backside. So is that re-going back into our aquifer?
Uh, the ponds are kind of. Uh, the ponds are kind of Hogan Bay and Thirty First in that area. Those are, they're going back into the, the water table, the shallow groundwater. And I believe Lot was doing a study to see kind of where that water was ultimately ending up at. So I, I don't know how much is continuing farther down and how much is staying in the shallow aquifer right now, but but I know Lot, Lot was working on a study for that.
Okay.
Dave, are you talking about the stormwater ponds that are just, uh, to the south of the Target Warehouse?
Y- yes.
Kind of on the right-hand side as you go northbound?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah, those are stormwater ponds.
Okay.
So those are, those are different.
Okay, that's for all the warehouses in the area?
And the roadways and those kinds of things. Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Brandon, I, I have a question actually. Are you done? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just going to mention that, um, so those ponds that Lot has and, and the, the groundwater infiltration or the reclaimed water infiltration. It's interesting that I, I don't think we alwa- always get credit for that when it comes to our water rights. Um, Brandon, do you want to talk about how that works with our water rights? Um?
But we don't get credit for what Lot is infiltrating out there.
Yeah.
We do get credit for what we, we have an infiltration facility at Woodland Creek Community Park. We do get credit for our water rights there. So we do that as a water right mitigation measure.
So when it comes to water, we've got kind of two things when it comes out of the ground. Obviously, you know, we, we have a lot of water under Lacey to be able to, and, you know, our surrounding area to pump the water out of the ground. The, the thing we don't have a lot of is the legal ability to do that. And, and that, the legal ability to do that is, is through our water rights program, which is overseen by the Department of Ecology. And there's some credits that we can get for putting more water back into the ground. And that's what we're talking about here is that we are credited with some, but not all. Um, so, you know, just something to, to consider is that, you know, we have plenty of water, but, um, sometimes you know, our, we're limited in our ability to remove, to take as much water as we, we can through our, our water rights requirements.
And, and new rights will be very difficult to get. But, uh, anything new is going to come with a very high mitigation burden.
Right.
And we still have our water from, I don't even, I'm going to say Tumwater, but is there some kind of agreement about some wa- water coming from Tumwater? That, that all the, like Olympia has some rights, we have some rights as a city for Tumwater, some water source in Tumwater?
Yes, we do have a, a third share of the, the old brewery rights. And, and I believe that Peter Brooks has been working with both Tumwater and Olympia on what the future looks like for that. That it's a difficult thing for us because of how far away it is to, to pump that water over here is you know, arguably not super feasible. So, so I know he's been working with them trying to figure out, you know, what our options are, what can we make work? So at this point, we don't really have a clear plan for what's going to happen there.
I just had a brief question about where I used to live. We had a major saltwater intrusion issue, but I'm assuming there isn't one here.
No, but we do saltwater intrusion monitoring up in the Hawks Prairie and Beechcrest area. We, we have a a well out in the Beechcrest area that is dedicated specifically to saltwater intrusion monitoring. We also have sensors out at like Marvin Road and Hawks Prairie, the, the Hawks Prairie site. We have specific depth and sensors there where we monitor to make sure that we don't get into that kind of situation. So it is something we've been watching for.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for Brandon?
Peg, did you have another question? Which is, okay.
She forgot to put her hand down.
Roger that.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon.
All right, thank you.
Alrighty. Um, we are now going to move on to new business. The low-density zone consolidation on the com- comprehensive plan amendment. Ryan, this is you.
Yep, so I've got a couple of short items tonight. The first one is I guess for lack of a better term, kind of a catch-up item or a, or a housekeeping item on updates to our comprehensive plan that we need to accomplish to reflect the, uh, low-density zone consolidation. So as you're all aware, the Planning Commission recommended and the City Council adopted the, the low-density zone, uh, consolidation, which took the two e- existing, previously existing low-density zones, the low-density zero-to-four zone, and then the low-density three-to-six zone and combined them into one low-density zone. So that took effect earlier, uh, this year. And, um, it's in, in our zoning code. In order to complete this amendment, we also need to follow back with amendments to our comprehensive plan. Um, two parts of that. Number one is we have the actual, like, document, the actual land use element of our comprehensive plan. The second part is that we've actually adopted our zoning map into our comprehensive plan as our future land use map. And so what I've done is I went through and looked at our comprehensive plan and we have essentially no references to the two low de- low-density zones in our comprehensive plan. So we don't need to worry about that. Um, we do refer to low-density, but just in a generic term, in a gen- general term that apply, can apply. And we don't need to make any amendments to that. Where we do need to make the amendments is to our existing zoning districts. So I included in your packet a map of our current, um, our current zoning map. And so what we are needing to do is take and, um, we've got two, kind of a light yellow and a lighter yellow zones, two zones and combine them into one low-density zone on that official zoning map, which has also, like I mentioned, been adopted into our comprehensive plan. So right now we have, um, and I mentioned in the staff report about thirty-six hundred acres of low-density residential zero-to-four and six-hundred-and-fifty-two acres of low-density residential three-to-six. And essentially this amendment will combine them, consolidate them into four, uh, totaling four-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-five acres, about forty-three-hundred acres. Um, what's ex- interesting to note is this zoning covers about forty percent of the land, um, within the city limits. So I did some calculations with, with our, you know, doing, having to do these zoning changes. I went and and figured that our, based on our current city limit size, about forty percent of Lacey is zoned low-density residential. So that is our primary zone, um, across the city and it will be across the urban growth area as well. So um, again, this really won't change anything. It'll just kind of combine those two districts into one, um, on the official map. The other part of this that I wanted to mention is that this doesn't touch anything in the urban growth area. So within the urban, this will only affect the city limits. So the, the zoning changes will, um, will need to adjust those things through our joint planning process. Uh, so we'll need to, uh, complete a comprehensive plan amendment to amend the zoning map in the UGA as well as come back and amend the zoning district requirements. So the actual zoning text in the UGA later as well as part of our joint planning uh, process with Thurston County. So this is a, a formal comprehensive plan amendment. It's a, a very you know, light one in terms of, you know, I don't think there's any additional public outreach that's necessary. Um, you know, we've already, the council's already adopted this. It's really just something to kind of, um, be aware of. Uh, it will be part of the full slate of comprehensive plan amendments for twenty-twenty-two and part of a future public hearing. So, you know, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have on it. Um, like I said, it's really just kind of a, um, a housekeeping item at this point. So be happy to answer any questions on this.
Anyone with questions on it? Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Alrighty. Thank you, Ryan, on that. And now it's your turn again.
All right, one second here.
Rules of procedure.
Yeah, rules of procedure. So I'm just going to pull up here, uh, on my screen so we can all take a look at it. So we, the Planning Commission is kind of governed by several different, um, uh, state and local statutes. So our, our state RCWs covers uh, planning commissions as well as our Lacey Municipal Code, uh, that's LMC two-thirty-two. Um, both of those kind of set, outline big, big picture framework for how planning commissions operate in, in the state of Washington and in the city of Lacey. But when it comes to your actual meetings and how they're conducted, that's where the rules of procedure come in. Um, so this outlines things like your meeting times and your election of officers and other logistical items. We last updated this in twenty-nineteen. Um, it was rather out of date at that point. And so we, uh, we just adjusted it about three years ago. So I went through this document. I'll share my screen and pull up, um, what we've got. Uh, so I went through it again. If everything's still applied, I didn't see anything else that needed to be adjusted other than our meeting times. And as I think you're all aware, the Plan Commission is kind of in agreement that this will be your last remote meeting, um, starting in two weeks. So on April nineteenth, that'll be your first in-person hybrid meeting. So you're welcome to either, you know, uh, sit in the council chambers in City Hall, just like we used to, or attend via Zoom like you are now. For those of you that haven't seen, the, the City Council has gone to this model for some of their work sessions already and it works out rather nice. Um, and so, you know, whatever you feel most comfortable in, in doing. Um, in, in going to this hybrid model, we'll need some additional time. Right now, we've, we've had a five o'clock start during COVID. With this kind of transitioning to this hybrid, we, we need to make a formal adjustment to the rules of procedure, which actually say your meeting times are from seven to nine. Um, and the, seemed like whe- when we reached out to the Plan Commission at previous meetings, the consensus was to do a, a six o'clock start time. So from six to eight. Um, so that would allow folks to transition from work to, um, be able to attend the Planning Commission meeting in person if they would like. So I, I like I mentioned, I went through the rest of this and I didn't see anything else that needed to be adjusted. I don't know if any of the Plan Commission members have anything else that they need that they can recognize that needs to be changed. Um, the, the only other thing is that our, our chair and vice chair have changed. It used to be Paul and Sharon and now it's Dave and, and Gail. Um, and so i- unless there's anything else, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this or yeah, um, if there are any other amendments that the Plan Commission would like to make, this would be the time to be able to do that. Um, really all we're looking for tonight is a motion, uh, with approval of a motion to be able to amend the rules of procedure. And then I will, I'll get the hard copy and bring it to the next meeting and have the chair and vice chair sign it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback.
So do you want us to do the motion and then ask questions? Or, okay, so I'm looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, rules of procedure as included here.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. So, um, so then I'm going to open up for if anybody has any questions, only because I have a question. So members of the commission can attend. Does it address in there? I didn't get a chance to read that whole thing. It doesn't address us attending via like a Zoom?
I- it doesn't. Um, there's nothing specific in there about the hybrid meeting kind of setup. Um, my understanding is that state law has recently been amended to reflect um, the allowance of, of hybrid meetings for purposes of the Open Public Meetings Act. So, um, if, you know, we could hold, everybody could still be on Zoom. Um, and we would still be able to have a quorum and still operate as normal. Um, the, the, the state law, uh, through this last legislative, uh, session was changed to allow for essentially hybrid meetings in perpetuity for those that would like to do them. So my understanding is I don't think we need to include any hybrid meeting functions in the rules of procedure. I think we already covered there.
Great. That was my question. I just wanted to make sure that if, uh, people want to do that, or for instance, people are traveling, but they have time to call in and attend a meeting. I think that's great. Um, some of us do that every once in a while. So Eddie might be out biking and need to call in on his phone and so, okay. So if there's no other questions, uh, all those in favor? Thumbs up? Opposed? None? It's a go.
Okay, so we'll see you six o'clock on the nineteenth for your next meeting.
Alrighty, uh, communicate. Communicate, anybody need to communicate anything special? Birthdays?
I, I, I did want to just, um, said I'm very excited about the, the trees giveaway uh, this Saturday, I believe it is, from, is it from nine to or ten to one o'clock at Hunter Park?
Yeah.
I'm very excited that we get to plant trees in our city.
Yep. That's awesome.
Okay.
I got my, I got my trees from Arbor Day, um, in the mail. So I've got them laid in now and waiting for planting.
Good job. Okay. Nothing else? Uh, our next meeting, uh, will be April nineteenth, six o'clock. Those that choose to attend in person, that'll be at the City Council. Chambers?
Yep, yeah, I wanted to mention one thing. Uh, as you're mentioning that, David, it popped into my head that there will not be a separate Zoom email anymore. So you know how you've always gotten like email links to attend the Zoom? If you want to, if you're remote and you want to attend remote, you will still use, you'll just use the link that's in the agenda. So use that public link that's in the agenda and then we will bring you on as a panelist. That's how that will work. So no more.
That's, that's a good point.
No more specific, um, email that you'll get. I just, I, pop in my head, I want you to be aware of that in case anybody's thinking about being remote.
Okay. Yes, Mark? You gotta, you gotta unmute yourself though.
I'm sorry about that. Um, yeah, question for you now. As far as to be able to link into that, you're saying we won't get the, the, the email. But is that on the, uh, the Lacey website next to Agenda? Is, is there a link there?
There's a link on the, on the website under the calendar. So like where you would click on the agenda part, um, right on the, the homepage, you pull up the agenda. And that's where that's going to be, is within the agenda.
Okay.
And we'll look, they'll look for you, Mark, and make sure to let you in.
Oh. All right.
But you're still going to send the agenda electronically to us, yes?
Correct, yeah. And, and, um, I would recommend to, you know, keep, it's been a while. It's funny talking about these things, but bring your, bring your iPad to the council meeting. Um, you know, we'll continue to send all the agenda items via, via email. So make sure to bring your iPads, um, for, for that purpose. So you have all the materials in front of you.
Okay, so again, April nineteenth, six o'clock, council chambers. Uh, feel free to attend in person or via the Zoom connection.
I'm so excited.
Yeah.
Been a long time.
With a show, with a show of hands, I'm just curious, how many people are going to attend in person? Okay, so I think we've all missed each other sitting in a room. So alrighty, but feel free if you need to zoom in. That's great. Um, so it is six oh nine. As usual, I thank you for all your hard work on the Planning Commission. And we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.